All right, I'm going ahead and call the Wednesday, May 10th, 2023 Nottingham Planning Board to order. Before we jump into any public hearings, we'll go around the room and have every member introduce themselves, please.
Robert Davies, ultimate.
Teresa Bascom.
Joe Moran.
Ian McKinnon.
Edward Veal.
Susan Mooney.
Sherri.
And let the record reflect that Mr. Davies will be seated and voting for Ms. Anderson tonight. So he'll be a fall voting member. Before we get into the business, I just wanted to bring up something. I brought this up during our formation hearing or our non-business meeting, but we didn't have everybody here, so I just want to reiterate in case not everybody had a chance to watch that. But I just want to remind the board of our civility, professionalism, and decorum amongst the board members and, you know, in personal attacks. We're not going to allow any kind of personal attacks at the table. I think one of the things we've done very well and continue to do is be a very professional board and represent the town in a professional manner. So that said, we will I'll address this part later. We will go ahead and call the first case to order. So we have a public hearing for case number 23-005-SIT, Nottingham Business Park, 145 Old Turnpike Road. Application from GM2 Associates, Inc. on behalf of Nottingham Business Park, LLC to complete construction of a 176,000 square foot building, paved access drives and parking areas, stormwater management systems, and existing onsite welfare to domestic water supply and fire suppression and an onsite septic system. The proposed use of the building and the site will be a warehouse for light industrial manufacturing. There are currently 26 loading docks for tractor-trailer loading and unloading. There are 119 paved parking spaces, including eight handicap spaces, of which two are van accessible. Property is located at 145 Old Turnpike Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and is identified as tax map 003 lot 010. And we have two gentlemen at the table. I'm assuming representing the applicants. If you could just introduce yourselves and just give us a quick narrative and then we'll bring it back to the board.
I'll jump in real quick. I need to recuse myself for this because I'm a direct authority of the project, so I'll take my seat for this.
So Mr. McKinnon has recused and he has left the table. All right, sorry about that.
I'm Dennis Hamer from GM2 Associates. Where the site civil engineers have prepared the plans and the application, did the stormwater calculations and the like. This is Tom Moulton from Nottingham Business Park, LLC. That's who we are.
All right, and do you want to give us a quick, I know you provided a narrative, but did you want to give us a quick overview besides what was in the the application description that I read?
I'd probably get started and then you can take over with all the details. So I bought the property from the town a year and a half ago, a tax sale, I guess. My intent and purposes was to try to obviously repurpose the building that had been pretty much constructed. You know, the foundation's up there, the steel's erected, and trying to figure out how I can make it economically viable for the town and for myself. So we're just trying to, you know, it's taken a little while to figure out what we have to do because things have changed since it's been, you know, it was approved. So my purpose is to try to come in and get it re-approved again, so when I went in, if I do find a tenant or, you know, a user that we can move quickly and not get hung up with any delays, just to be more, it would be good for the town, good for everybody. I look at it. Dennis, you can speak to the specifics.
I don't know how many of you are familiar with the USA Springs project when that went through. So the footprint of the building is obviously the same and where the park, where we show parking and access drives and all that stuff was already cleared and grubbed and some of the base gravel was put in. So that's all existing now. The stormwater systems, two of the major basins were constructed. There was a wetland replication area that was created because there were some wetlands needed to be filled to put that size building in that area because of little fingers of wetlands that were around. And that was all approved by the state and the town back then. And those are existing and actually functioning. Beyond that, we got to, we're trying to, like Tom said, recreate, or not recreate, but re-permit this thing in a very similar fashion to the way it was. However, the rules have changed not only from the town, but also from the state, which caused us to do some additional stormwater things that we have to do. And we'll probably need, I definitely will need a waiver from the state for some of the infiltration requirements because we can't, where the site is, without going out and clearing large sections of woods to put in another infiltration system. And they said they could entertain reducing the requirement for some infiltration. Some of our basins are not really infiltration basins, but they do infiltrate. So we've got a little side check there. So the actual size of the footprint of the pavement is less than what it was when the USA Springs project because back then we needed a very large area for the tractor-trailers to come and go and to store. And right now, we don't need that anymore. There's, like you said, there's 26 loading docks that's framed into the building. Whatever owner comes to buy this thing, most likely won't need that many. And he'll put in whatever he needs for his facility. So there could be a reduction in pavement and other things as act was fore. But we just wanted to show pretty much what we had before. And we did reduce it, then it actually pulled it a little further away from the butters on Lincoln Drive because we just reduced the width of our required loading area. So that shortened that by like 70 feet. So that gave us, going to get a little extra space there. So we're not cutting any trees to do this. Everything that was cleared previously is now cleared. The wetlands that were filled, were filled, and we don't need to fill anymore to do what we got to do. With one exception, I just got some notes this afternoon from several departments here that have reviewed, told them they reviewed the plans. And the fire chief may want a lap in a road all the way around the building. Unfortunately, the only way that could happen would be this one little section of well in that may need to be partially filled to do that. So we're going to meet, Tom and I are going to meet with the fire chief and get his concerns directly, and we'll do whatever he wants us to do. Now, there's, the existing wells out there for the USA Springs obviously produce a fair amount of water, more than a normal well would produce. So we're going to be using one of those wells and the highest producing well from the USA Springs project and try and do a water treatment, a water system out there that can produce, you know, so we can sprinkle the building. That system hasn't been fully, hasn't been designed as of yet, but depends on how we go forward with the project. That's what we're planning to do. Now, there may be some tanks, some cisterns, and other things involved with that, and pumping systems and little houses to house those pumpings and the controls. But that's all going to be designed. But it'll all be in areas which are fully open now. There's not, no trees going to be cleared to do that. The other thought was, it was mentioned in some of the comments and actually on our plans of connecting this parcel to Tom owns the other two parcels that are butted. And when that gets developed into a subdivision that we want to, our intent was to have an easement so that there'd be a way in and out of all the places there. And that won't be for everyday use, but it'll be for emergency use, so there'd be a gate there at the end so that anybody in our facility, this facility, gets trapped because of something across the thing where a truck blows up, who knows what. They can't get out, but they'll be able to go out the other way. And emergency vehicles can come in the other way. It's the same with all the lots in the subdivision. We'll have another way out if their entrance gets blocked. So all that will be connected with easements and the like, as well as the water system. The proposal is now to try and produce enough water and have enough storage and capacity to supply the subdivision as well from that well. It has enough water in it, but, you know, if you're going to sprinkle five or six industrial buildings, it's going to take a lot of water to start it up. But then once it's set, the cisterns will be full and then it's just going to matter of refilling them when they, when they go down. And then everything be under pressure. So that's the concept now. And when we get a guy involved with designing that, then we'll have no more information as far as that goes. So I guess that's what we do. We, you know, we don't have a tenant, but we're planning on doing it as a warehouse with light industrial commercial space inside. We have 119 spaces paved, shown on the plan. Probably more than we actually need with what we're showing now. However, we don't quite know who's going to go there. So when someone comes in and if it's higher than what we show or the septic is designed for, then they'll just have to come back in and do a change of use or whatever to get it going. But we're just trying to get the basic engineering done as far as the stormwater and the access ways and all that kind of stuff. So that's the purpose of our coming in and filing this application.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so the first, so for anybody in attendance, first order of business when we have a public hearing is we do a quick narrative with the applicant, and then we act on the application completeness. Once the application, if the application is found as complete and accepted, then the board can have higher level discussions, in binding discussions with the applicant. But the first course of action is on the application itself. Mr. Haney, I know you had a chance to review, provide some comments. Is there anything that you found that would make you, would prevent acceptance of the application as complete tonight?
No, as I noted, it doesn't appear that they are requesting any waivers or that there's any impacts to what those are buffers that would require a conditional use permit. Is that true?
There's one question I have, and with respect to that, is the definition of a structure? Because we do have a retaining well and when our infiltration basin on one side is the only spot we can put it on the site, is less than 25 feet from the wetlands. Now, is a retaining well considered a structure? It's not listed as one of the structures in the definitions. Then, I know a septic system is considered a structure, but this is not a septic system. It's a stormwater infiltration system, so it's just rooftop runoff going into the ground. So that's a question that I have for the board, or, you know, your interpretation of structure and your interpretation if I need a waiver there or not.
I believe that it's written as a no disturb area, right, in the new zoning regs?
So the-
Or a structure, yes. I did, well, I understood it to be that you couldn't have a structure within 25 feet.
So our zoning was updated this year. So I don't know if this is what we're discussing, but our zoning was updated this year. It was, we, warrant order was put through at the end of last year, beginning of January, and it was voted on in March and approved. So there's a wetland vegetative buffer that's been added of 25 feet, which is like a no disturb area now. Just reading their definition of structure. That which is built or constructed with a fixed location on the ground or attached to something having a fixed location on the ground, whether installed on, above, or below the surface of land. They include, but not limited to, a building, barn, swimming pool, manufactured home, mobile home, septic system, well, gas, liquid storage tank, deck, porch, balcony, breezeway, carport, garage. Shall not include a boundary wall, fence, driveway, and any kind of place of septic system. So so, yeah, so we'll have to get into that, I guess.
One note on that also, that it's a no disturb area. The area that we're doing this is already disturbed. It's not, it was disturbed. It was planned on being used for the original project.
Okay.
So that's, the question I have, is that a waiver? Or is that a variance we need for that? Those are my questions.
I think if, if that's kind of the only thing that's, we have a question on as to the application, I think that shouldn't hold us up for moving forward.
And did you have no waivers? No waiver requests from the regulations?
No, well, I say that again, but now I wanted to discuss with the board because we're going to be, obviously, we could need to go to DOT and get a highway entrance permit for the site as well, which is going to have a traffic study. I know a traffic study is required. That's when it will be provided for them. You know, it's not a town on the road. So the traffic study, I think would be more appropriate for their purposes to designing that entrance. Show an entrance on there, which is the same as used as the USA Springs project, which was adding an extra lane and 500 feet of deceleration and acceleration lanes and a dedicated turn lane. So all that's exactly the same one as was previously approved. I don't think their regulations have changed enough really to change that. I mean, we're going to have tractor-trailer use, we're going to have car use, so that type of stuff on a 55 mile an hour highway requires that kind of entrance. So I don't think that's going to change much. But again, we got to do that. We'll have to do a new traffic study. I don't know the, if they've had some traffic counts out there that differ from what we did 15 years ago.
And that's, and again, the access-
No, you know, if they had COVID and all kinds of things, screwed everything up.
And the access is controlled by the state. We don't have purview over it. We can make comment to DOT, but we don't have-
So is that a waiver request from us, is my question?
The traffic study, if it's, if it's, if it's a requirement, then yes, I think, just to be, because we, and that could be potentially, if it's approved by this board, if the waiver's approved, then it could be part of the reasoning for it, is that, that, you know.
So should, you should, we should ask for a waiver?
Just if it's a requirement, just to be, keep it all clean and, you know, yep, I think that's probably better. I think you do have a pre-filled in your application. I think you signed a waiver, but it was blank, so.
Yeah, it was blank, yes. I basically didn't have a real answer for that, so it was, come back to the board to discuss that.
Yeah, yeah. So we have one that's kind of pre-filled, so you can just add that in. So again, I think we can address that through the application side.
So you think- I mean, it appears in 10.5 that it's at your discretion, which I kind of figured. To facilitate this review, the applicant may be required to provide a traffic impact analysis when deemed necessary to the board. And then it goes into requirements. Again, you know-
Yeah, if it's not a shall.
Yeah.
If it's not a shall or a must, then it may is one of those things where we can, we can address it during the, during the the rest of, once the application is accepted.
So in your, in your, so what you're saying in response to the questions is the only request for a waiver at this time would be that, the traffic study?
What about the, what about the retaining well being the other?
Right, but just with the waiver requests, that's the only one that you're-
That's the only one I believe we need. Because there was, there was a comment about the height of the building. And right now, the building's roughly 32 feet high, and I think 34 feet is the max. And Tom had originally had a client that particularly wanted a 40-foot inside, so he was thinking about raising the roof, and that would have required a variance of some sort.
And you never pursued that?
Too expensive. Not worth a million dollars.
I couldn't remember. Yeah, I couldn't remember.
And ended pretty quick.
So we don't need that, and obviously, we got plenty of parking. We don't need waiver for any of that kind of stuff.
And then, so the only other thing with wetland impacts is this gray area, this structure near, near the wetland?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, that's kind of where I was trying to get at. It looks like you have everything you need. And you already have their stormwater report, which is good. So, yes, I would say that the application is complete.
Any further discussion on the board, by the board regarding the application completeness? If not, a motion to either accept or deny? Yep.
With the retaining well, there's no waiver that's required for that at this point?
I think we have to get into the plan to get into that detail. And if there is, I think we can address that at that point.
Yeah, I think we've done it before where someone's done a conditional use permit as things came about in commerce.
Yeah, sometimes, yeah, that comes up. And if it does, then we have a process for that, too. Would you like to make a motion? Need to act on, to either accept it as complete or not accept it as complete.
Chair, I move that we, the case number 23-005-SIT is complete.
A second.
A motion by Ms. Mooney, and a second by Mr. Moran to accept the application as complete. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention? Okay, the motion carries 501. Okay, so now we can get into the, the higher discussions. You gave us a great overview. Is there anything else you wanted to add before we bring it back to the board for more discussion, more input?
The only other thing that I have on here, I just call out some landscape areas. I don't call out specific plants and shrubs and trees and those kind of things. The reason for that is, is that, you know, a client may want to do his own kind of landscaping, and this being a business off the road, industrial-type, commercial-type building, I don't see any real need unless you come up with a client who wants a fancy entrance and all that stuff to have, you know, real expensive landscaping out there. I can see some street trees, maybe we can plant along the separation of the loading dock area and the drive. I have separated the traffic so that the traffic for cars go in separately from the trucks. But they all come in off Route 4 the same. Then it splits. The trucks go this way and the cars go that way to park so they don't interfere with each other when they're maneuvering.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
What part of this you like or not for regional impact?
We should, we should go over that now? Please.
I move that this case, case 23-005-SIT, is a project of regional impact. Second.
It's a motion by Ms. Mooney, a second by Ms. Bascom to move that this application is a development of regional impact. I believe when we make those motions, we have to list some of the criteria that are triggering it. Do you have those, Blair? Or does anybody have those?
I don't have it.
On my own.
That's a good question. I think it means we got to deal with the towns. They got to send stuff to both towns. They have neighboring towns. It's triggered by certain things.
Do you have, it's in our, I just don't have the, sorry, I just want to make sure.
Or parking spaces, things like that.
The following six factors that may be expected to impact neighboring towns, any one of which could result in DRA determination. Relative size, the number of filling units as compared with existing stock, proximity to the borders of a neighboring community, transportation networks, anticipated emissions such as light noise, smoke, odors, or particles, proximity to aquifers or surface waters which transcend municipal boundaries, shared facilities such as schools and solid waste disposal facilities.
Would you like me to list a couple?
Please.
In consideration of the fact that this project abuts the town of Barrington, possible light pollution, traffic studies. There might have been another one. That should be adequate. Protection of water, there's a big wetland just over the boundary with Barrington. That's a protected wetland.
And I think you want to list who you're bringing in.
Cutting towns?
Yeah, as your, as, who now has standing as a, as a butter.
So Lee Barrington in Northwood.
Is there any further discussion from the board regarding the motion on this application as, as being one with a development of regional impact for the reasoning of proximity to Barrington, the traffic corridor, as I understood it, and so notification to Lee Barrington, Northwood, and potential for light collusion? Any further discussion on this?
Light pollution for industrial park?
Gives the opportunity to neighboring towns to provide comment.
Could I, could I make a comment on that issue?
I'll keep it brief, just because we've had the motion and we have to act on it, but I'll, I'll-
Well, the building itself is several hundred feet from, a couple hundred feet from Route 4, and from Barrington, it's 500 feet or more. It won't be, I don't see how light pollution could be an issue there at all. And it's, it's almost 1,000 feet to Lincoln Street, Lincoln Drive.
So I believe this requires a roll call vote, if I remember correctly.
And was it Barrington, Lee, and Northwood?
Yes.
They're all on SRPC's regional planning, so it'll be handled by one of our staff.
So I'll just go in order, starting on my right. Mr. Davies?
I approve.
Ms. Bascom?
Okay.
Mr. Moran?
No.
Let's get myself for now. Ms. Mooney?
Mooney, yes.
And Ms. Hamer?
Yes.
And and I'll abstain, so that gives us a 410, so that does qualify as a development of regional impact. So normally, sorry, it's 411 is the rule on that. So we've kind of gone back and forth before on this with developments of regional impacts. We've had, seen more in this region. We tend to be a little bit conservative, I'd say, with, with these, and trying to be mindful, especially when something's on a town border, of declaring something, a development of regional impact. So we just try to make sure that everybody has a chance to have a voice that, that wants to. Mr. Haney, where, you've probably had a chance, our RPC has had a few more of these. I've had differing opinions on whether we can continue with some comment at this point, or if we need to stop and move forward, or wait till we have that notification go out. If it's not a hard and fast rule, I think we should continue with some discussion. That way, we can at least provide some input, whatever we found so far, so that at the next, at the continued hearing, there would be a chance to address those things as opposed to a further, a further delay of, of, of anything from there, so.
Yeah, I'm not seeing anything that specifically states it, and I don't know definitively either. I don't think that there's a problem with getting information from the applicant. I think public testimony, you know, the public hearing piece.
Yeah.
You know, all the, I guess you could say the butters haven't been notified now, so. I think you can, you can get, I think we can get some clarification on some of this stuff so that we know what we're dealing with. But I wouldn't venture too far.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, that's fine. So I'm going to go on that side of things where the board, everything we discuss, we'll put in the minutes anyway. That way, the draft minutes from tonight will go out to those entities, so they'll be able to have them, so they can see what we discussed and see if it addresses anything that they may have for concerns, or if they want to touch upon anything else. So I'll bring it back to the board first. Does anybody have a comment regarding the application or questions that they'd like to see addressed or clarified?
I'm not sure I understand that subdivision that you're referring to. Is that next to you?
That's, that's land owned by Tom. He bought three, three pieces of property from the town, and all three of them are side by side. The big one we're working on now, there's a 28-acre piece in the middle, then another 66-acre piece beyond it. That 66 and 20-acre piece is going to be subdivided into a industrial, commercial slash subdivision.
So when you refer to subdivision, you're referring to the entire parcel?
Or a future-
No, just the 20 and 68 apart, parcel.
Yeah, this parcel is a standalone piece.
But a future, that's a future potential, not, not, not tonight.
Future potential.
Well, the potential is, this, this land's going to stay the way it is. The other two parcels are going to be cut up into different pieces, into different lots, multiple lots.
Because when you're referring to the water at the lot that you're talking about, that there is enough of it to go to the subdivision?
Yes, that's, that's our concept at this point, yeah.
You'll just go into a cistern, pump it into a cistern, holding tank, and you'd run a line down the road so people could have domestic water for toilets, sinks, and it would have enough water in it-
In the separate subdivision.
In the subdivision, right, just like the water system.
But that's not before us today?
No, no, no. No, no, no. I'm just trying to explain the big picture, that's all.
Yeah.
And that would be used for fire protection and for domestic water. And once it's filled, it's filled.
Yeah.
You just have it there when you need it.
This, you came in front of us
Yeah, a while ago.
A year ago, maybe longer, with the conceptual plan for this whole subdivision.
Right.
Which you had some of these details
Right.
in front of us.
Concept, right.
Or where the road goes in from the set road and splits off and
Right.
the four buildings and that was there, so.
I think we had six or seven.
Overall plan, I take it. This is just one step into the overall plan.
We're going to be, we're going to be bringing another application in probably later this year for that subdivision.
The town seemed very receptive of the commercial work because it just impacted schools. If any of you don't know if you've been out there, but this place is in the middle of nowhere. It's really very private and quiet, so it shouldn't have much impact on anything that's, like you were saying back, there's a bunch of water in Brentwood that's protected. The buildings, there's a lot of space around everything. It's light pollution, shouldn't be a problem at all. I mean, it's just common sense, you'll see it. So it shouldn't affect any neighbors or anybody else. There's like nothing behind there. So it's very quiet, private, and a good use, I think, for the town and for tax base, whatever. This is my big picture.
Well, my concern with lighting is, we have suggestions on our website in Nottingham for downlighting.
Of course.
It doesn't interfere with dark-
Oh, yeah, I like downlighting. I have my own buildings now, and I have LED lights come down. I agree with you.
And on, then maybe on timers or motion detectors, those sort of things.
Yep, no, I would agree. But it is, shouldn't impact anybody, but it makes sense what you're saying, that the downlighting, yep. Instead of wall packs, they shoot down instead of shooting out kind of thing.
I do have a concern with-
I do, I do have a concern with the quality of water that's in the bedrock on that site. When USA Springs was first proposing to put in their bottling facility, it was detected that there were contaminants that had come down through the bedrock, a plume from Just Cause, a budding property, where they had just dumped chemicals into the ground.
Really?
And then when they were doing their testing wells, some of that contamination was pulled out. So testing since two thousand and five has become much more sophisticated, like a testing for PFOAs. And my concern, and our concern, is how is that going to impact eventually the people on Lincoln Drive? Or the proposed residential?
Well, you're not going to be pumping the kind of water that USA Springs, and they were going to be constantly pumping, pumping, pumping.
True, true.
Water, and I know that the aquifer dropped, but I was told, and leveled up, so once you just fill up these cisterns, you don't really have to do anything, and toilets and sinks are all you're going to really need it for. You know, for domestic. The other thing is just the big, for the fire protection, and that's just like filling up a swimming pool and leave it alone, you don't touch it. So I don't think you're going to find the draw, I know your point, like if you draw a lot of water, it starts, you know, sucking stuff from other areas. I don't see that happening.
I just wondered what, what the extent of the plume is now on this property.
I mean, I'm sure when you pump the water, we're going to have to test it anyway, if it's a public water supply for drinking, for domestic water, you're going to have to make sure that the water's tested and make sure there are no contaminants. That's kind of, I have friends of mine that built public water supplies, and it's kind of a requirement you have to do to maintain the quality of water, so to your point, we would, we have to do that.
Well, that's good to know.
Well, also, if you, were you part of the, back when USA Springs was coming in? Because prior, prior to this board approving the USA Springs project, there was a huge contamination withdrawal from that Just Cause site. They excavated a couple hundred thousand yards of material out of there.
Yeah, I remember that.
Cleaned it and put it back, and the state declared it clean at that time. So that was, that was a requirement of this board to approve it.
Right, I was on the Conservation Commission at that time, but not on the Planning Board.
Okay, well, you were aware of what was going on.
And we did a site visit to Just Cause and, and all of that.
But there was a huge excavation in there, and they had to, they had to excavate hundreds of thousands of yards of material, that whole area that contaminated.
Sure, remediated.
What's that?
Remediated.
Yes, they did, on site, and they, the state said it was, I don't know, call it clean, but it was, it was acceptable, I guess, at that point.
Yes, so again, so any proposed use of this, where that would be a public water supply, which I think is twenty-five or more users, or whatever, would go through DES.
Yes.
Start testing regularly.
Yep.
I think they've called this a community well.
And...
It's not a public one.
And I'm sure, if you haven't already, you know, a good thing maybe to do would just be confirm with any GES that I think there was, because it's on our hazard maps, it's like KMB Realty Trust or something like that for this property. I'm sure there was a case file open, and just confirm that, that, that that's been closed, and I tried poking around on OneStop to confirm it, and I'll go on that website often, so I don't navigate it well. But I could see, you could see the application and that stuff, I couldn't necessarily find where it had been closed, but I'm sure that would help as well. But to Ms. Mooney's point, since that point, since that time, you know, there's been additional, additional enhancements on, on what's available for testing and everything, so. So something we can, to be, to keep in mind, and potentially just, you know, address again as we move, as it goes forward. Does the rest of the board have any other comment?
I have a question on this page here. That, that shows Barrington, the Barrington Town Line and stuff. You've got a circle, or, excuse me, a outline around the, I assume this is the lot?
Yes.
And it extends into the development, into Barrington, and I don't understand what this page is supposed to represent, or what it's all about.
It shows the relationship of Barrington parcel to our parcel, that, that shaded part is what the town, that provided to us from the town. That basically, once you put a note in there, it, it highlights all the abutters.
It's a hundred foot, hundred foot abutter line.
Okay.
That's what the shaded area, that's...
I have no idea why this is in here and what it means.
That's part of the abutters list, it shows why they're being notified.
Okay.
And the two abutters in Barrington, one of them's the town of Barrington, and the other one is a land trust in Barrington. So there's no residential abutter to the property.
Oh, okay, I wasn't aware of that.
And that should be in there as well, that, that, the Barrington abutters.
Town of Barrington, yes.
So we do have some comments from the, from SRPC, our, our staff planner, sort of writer, which we'll forward those over to you, so you can address.
I have them, they gave them to me this afternoon.
And I'll, I'll kind of run through mine quickly, and anything I had kind of come up. Within the narrative in some of the site plan, so obviously make sure that the address is correct on everything. Couple of times, it's Old County Road, and several turnpike roads, just get that cleaned up. But USA Springs is mentioned much times, so I think it was like, maybe language was pulled from a prior narrative. I'd say, unless there, you're not proposing any kind of water pumping, water usage besides...
How do you know that's a dead issue, so don't worry about it?
So I would recommend...
Just drink, flush the toilets, and sprinkler systems, all we need.
Except for a reference of potentially that there was a prior plan, I would eliminate any of that, and make sure that the right project is, is named. Any prior approvals, you know, that were mentioned, all those have expired, to my knowledge. We can check with council if, if there's questions on any of that, but, so we have to kind of treat this, besides the existing footprint of the structure, we have to treat it as new, so we can't rely on any of those DES approvals or, or any of those things, so it's got to meet all the, the current regs. The wetland remediation or replication, that was one thing I had a question on. Because I feel like during the USA Springs time, and even during its bankruptcy, there was, the state had required some kind of monitoring of those during rainfall events, and that was being done. I don't know if that was your firm, or I don't know what firm was doing that.
Yeah, we were doing it for a period of time, and then until then, it finally stopped when everybody went away, I guess.
So I guess we'd want to just have confirmation that those wetlands are, and I know you, you mentioned this, but are, that they're, that, that's met the state's approval, or whatever their requirements were.
Yeah, the state, the state has not approved it, but according to our wetland scientists, it's a functioning wetland.
Okay, so I don't know...
Because he mapped it as a wetland.
So I don't know what the, um, if, if, if there's state approval that is needed, if that was a replication because of a dredge and fill, if there is something that's needed at that point to clean that up, I don't know if we can get any confirmation from DES, or if DES is going to comment on this as part of any other portion of it. If it's mapped as a wetland, and you're, I'm sure you're, then subjecting all the wetland rules to it that we have, of, you know, setbacks and, and all that. You're not treating it as a, like an infiltration basin, or a...
Not a detention, not a stormwater, not a stormwater spot, no.
Uh, you already mentioned DOT will need to be consulted with, they control the access, so they'll have to look at the driveway permit and go over whatever that, so if there was a conditional approval, that would always be one of the items that we would condition. Uh, one thing I was going to mention, and we've asked this for other towns with large commercial projects, is, and I can't remember the proper term for it, so I apologize, but there's a, um, there's a way to create like a traffic plan, basically, so if there are a lot of commercial vehicles coming in and out, directing them to state roads instead of, so they're not going into the town roads. So large trucks on town roads has been an issue with, you know, our maintenance and everything else, so just trying to keep them onto the state quarters, the roads are a little bit wider, and more, more set up for that. So I can't remember what that's called, but that'd be something I think we would welcome. You already mentioned that, the lighting, I was going to say, just, you know, we don't have dark sky zoning, but I think that's generally what people come forward with, is, you know, sorry, I say it's dark sky compliant, or meets those, in that atmosphere. You already mentioned the fire, so we would need their input either from the chief, interim chief, or the town administrator acting, you know, getting some kind of comment for us and for you, where firing fire, you mentioned that you've had some, some...
Yeah, we, we plan on meeting with, with the fire chief.
Yeah, so we usually, they usually ask us, or set up like the suppression side. Other structures have had an apron around them all the way, I don't know, I don't believe this does have an apron all the way around it, like a concrete apron or anything.
The building, no.
So that'd be something we would just look for their input on. Already mentioned that. And then the light industrial use, that's one thing, uh, so we do, we do call it a commercial industrial zone, but if you look at our zoning, commercial gives you a number of things that are allowed. Industrial is allowed by special exception to zoning, so depending on what that means and how that's interpreted, it might require a variance. And I know you said nothing's planned at this, at this time, because you don't have a, um...
Tenant.
A tenant. So it's potential that, that if, if the site plan was forward, that potentially it could have to come back before the board as a change of user, like once there's a tenant known, and depending on what the scope and scale is at that time.
I think the appropriate thing for us to do at this point, just call it a commercial building.
Yeah.
And then commercial warehouse kind of thing.
Okay.
And that we do, don't need a special exception.
Yeah.
And then if a new owner comes in and wants to do light industrial, then he'll have to get a special exception for his specific use.
Sure, yep.
We don't know what that, it would be, so at this point.
Okay.
That would be the way to go.
Yeah, so that, that sounds, sounds good. So, yep.
Can I just ask the project narrative that was written up, and I, I don't know where or who did it, but it was very difficult to read, because there was a lot of misspellings and run-on sentences and stuff, and I think that as a professional coming before the board, this should be cleaned up, so that it can, because it's going to be part of your case file. I, I'm not a huge English major, but I really, I had to put it aside a couple of times, because I had a hard time reading it, and I'm not trying to be snobby or, or anything like that.
I'm surprised I haven't been spelled checked today.
I, I was too, so I wondered where it was pulled from, and when I see one forty-five Old Country Road, I wondered where this was pulled from, because I've never known Route Four to be called Old Country Road, and I've lived in New Hampshire all my life. So I'm just, would like that, and then some of the maps, with them being two thousand and five, I wondered, you know, things, things have changed, I'm sure, out there on the land, why these weren't updated at all to reflect what landscape changes.
I don't understand what you mean by that, what do you mean, updated?
Yeah, I don't understand that either.
Updated, I mean, yeah, so the community impact assessment, statement, you know, that's where, that's the part that mentions USA Springs a few times. There was a, um, a section about the community impact, the feedback statement, I think it's got that in there as well. So the tax revenue, I think those are, those are correct, I think those are twenty, twenty-three numbers, the assessed values. So I think some of that was, you know, eighty employees, and I mentioned the hours and things like that, so just want to make sure that maybe these are just cleaned up and, and revised, submitted, just eliminating any of that as much as possible. And again, correcting the, the name, just so that we know that the one forty-five Old Turnpike Road is carried through.
I did mention there's a couple places where it says one sixty-five Old Turnpike.
Yeah, or, or Old County.
Okay, yeah, that's...
Or just Route Four for USA Springs, so it's all over the place.
It's, it's one forty-five.
Forty-five.
One sixty-five is your other parcel.
Yeah, one sixty-five is the farther parcel to the left, yeah.
And then on the, um, let's go just like sheet G, the first, the cover sheet, there's a box kind of beyond where like the septic system would be, I believe it is, or the, yeah.
Yeah.
What is?
That would be the septic reserve area.
Okay, okay, and that's within the, beyond a hundred foot buffer of the neighbors, okay. And then you mentioned a barn that had at some point burned.
No longer there.
So that's not being proposed to be restored or, or anything else. So that was, um, those were kind of my thoughts and, and comments, and I think you addressed the others. In the police department, sorry, also responded, and they didn't have any, any comments at this time. And the road agent, I believe, did, or the highway department also responded, sorry, Ms. Sandler, I just wanted... But this isn't being proposed, is, is to be accepted ever as a town road or town, so town plowing would not be occurring, and that's at this point.
Private driveway.
A private driveway, and if it, I don't know if it's going to be designed to, if it ever is connected to anything else, would it then become a road, or?
No, there's no, no ever intention to do that, I mean, it's built like a road, because it's trucks coming up and down it, so it's got to, got to be a heavy-duty road, rather than a simple twelve-foot wide driveway, it obviously got two-way traffic because of its length, so.
Yep, and then usually one of the requirements, and I'll let the fire department speak for themselves, but make sure there's enough access for them to be able to have turnaround and things like that.
Yeah, there's plenty of room to turn around, other than going all the way around the building. But I will, we will talk to the chief and see if he still wants that, if that's a real necessity for him, if it is, we'll, we'll provide it.
Sure.
But it will cause some well and impact.
Yeah, and if, and if you have, uh, you can also include the, the, we have a town administrator, I was going to say new, but she's been here for a while now. You can also connect with her as well to make sure that you get a response, because I know we're in due time for the, for that, so, so make sure you get your responses. Uh, Ms. Sandler, I'm sorry.
Oh, you answered my question.
Okay. All right.
So as far as a community, um, regional impact project, for us, it doesn't really mean anything. It means you just, you just disseminate your, your notes to others, and they have the opportunity to come here to speak.
Well, no, so they have an opportunity, well, yes, they'll have, so we'll have to continue to a date and time certain. We have to give that enough time to get the regional notice out, and get to the, to allow for that. Our regional planning commission is Stratford Regional Planning Commission, so that's who does our reviews. So we would send it there, they would send notification out to the towns mentioned. We have to put together the draft minutes within, get it all out within, I think, five days, and then allow for some time for it to come back, so our normal continuous is two weeks, but that generally doesn't give that process enough time, so we'd be looking probably at the first meeting in June to, um, to be able to allow that process to occur, and allow any, any testimony to come back. If I'm speaking, yeah, let me know, but I believe that's...
Beyond that, there was note of a peer review for the stormwater, and who does that, and how?
Yeah, so we utilize, if, if the board so deems that, and that is pretty common, that, that we like to see some kind of, to get that reviewed, as well as any, if there's any kind of maintenance manual for it, being prepared in, in language that's going to say that, that's either going to be the responsibility of the landowner, or the, um, or the tenant, or if it gets sold, so that there's some kind of enforcement for the town. Basically, it's not going to be the town that's the one that's ever responsible for maintaining it, but they have some kind of action if they need to. So we had a good example recently, Mitchell Road does a private subdivision, houses residential. But that has, after back and forth a few times, has some good language, basically to add in some verbiage that if the town had to go in to do some maintenance, it wasn't being done, basically, it allowed them to, but there's, that, the town is not the primary or contact on that.
Who do you use for your stormwater review, if you have a private?
Generally, our, our engineering, normal engineering firm is CMA. And we can get a, um, we could send this out to them for, first, an estimate, and then, you know, we usually let the applicant see that first before we sign off to approve it, so obviously, so you can see the cost associated there. So is anything else from the board before we potentially continue?
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yep.
I had asked in my thing, I was just reading back over it, it looks like most of it's been answered or alluded to, so I feel pretty good about that, but down at the bottom, I was asking, is the access drive to the well completed?
No, there's nothing there, well, there's a gravel path that goes out there, and actually the, it turned into a wetland since USA, USA Springs people were using it to get out there when they did their testing and had to monitor those wells. They had a gravel, or not call it gravel, they just got a path out there, and it had some low spots, and that was designated as a wetland, so we have to go around that. But that, that's about it, and that will be improved into where a truck can actually go out there, depending on what kind of equipment we need out there, once we design the water system.
There's, obviously, for wetlands, you have to respect the buffers and stuff, but what about, because this is right near, where they showed it on the plan, it was right close to the property line. Is this considered something that needs to respect that setback line? That we had for driveways, we created driveways in the zoning? I mean, it's like an internal access, I don't, I, you know, I just, it's, it's a question to the board, how they want to view it.
Yeah, I don't think it would meet the... Yeah. I don't think it would meet the definition of a driveway because it's, you're not anticipating routine, any kind of routine travel on it.
Right. It's not, it's not a form of egress or anything.
Right.
Okay.
It's an access path only if it was ever proposed to be upgraded to make, you know, something in the back there. At that point, it would need to, it would need to be the zoning, potentially getting kind of waivers and such. So the only thing is, again, I guess I would check those measurements and if, if any kind of improvements in that area encroach on that wetland area, that vegetative buffer that we have now, the 25-foot vegetative buffer, then you would need a conditional use permit application and we would have to make sure that gets on the agenda.
We also have a setback for driveways from property lines.
Yes.
And I just was trying to find out how they, how they wanted to view it.
Yeah.
Does it look like you were going right up next to the property line on the exit? Sounds like you'll be right there. You're.
It's closest to property line, but it's not over it, obviously. But
Yeah.
The issue there would be that, not the issue, but if this comes to fruition, it's just an if, so we can't look at it as if it's actually going to happen. You know, if they're using that same water supply for the subdivision, if that happens, obviously there's going to be an easement to that well for the other, for those folks to have somebody go, go there too. Because it's all going to be part of their system. But right now, it's just kind of, right now, it's for us. And then if, if it works out that way, then the next time we come through, that'll happen then, when we come through the subdivision. We need to get someone involved soon to get that designed so that we, we know what we're up against as far as, you know, if it can even support that kind of development for fire suppression.
And you've already identified the cemetery and certain that's where it is. It's clearly identified.
That's pretty clear. Yeah.
As I say, we have a stroke side, a few members on there that are tremendous about knowing where some of those are, if you need help. But it sounds like you've got it.
Well, there's a state law. You can't, can't do anything within 25 feet of that anyways.
Yeah. No, we've just had a few others in towns where I wouldn't know that they were a cemetery because they were just field stones. So you got it, you got it, so perfect. Is there any further comment from the board?
I have a request probably for next time we entertain you gentlemen, but I'm looking at some plan design sheets that delineate the wetlands. And the lines that you have drawn, the line, dot, 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 line, dot, 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 is not identified in legend section on A1.20, nor do I know what WF means. Usually we have a delineation of a wetland and then it shows poorly drained soils and then very poorly drained soils beyond that. And I.
Well, there is a soils plan that shows the weather's poorly and very poorly.
So that's on page, and it's maybe something you can just walk us through later. V2.10 in the match page, V2.11 is just a hard line around that. But I don't see very poorly drained soils with a key that identifies where they are. So maybe next time you can.
Yeah, I don't believe then, I'll have to look at, it was the same wetland scientist, by the way, that did it back then that did it again. But we have, and his stamp is on those plans. And he, Jamie Wong, used to work for New Hampshire Soil Consultants. They went away and now he works for GTA.
I just would like to know where these are. It says they were found very poorly drained, were found in the eastern portion of the site. But there's no key that shows up as to where.
I think what he's referring to, he did the entire 166 acres. He's probably talking about that great big pond off, on the other site, on the other parcel. There's a big pond there. It's not on this piece. Our piece does not have that type of land on it. This, this 80 acres here, roughly 80 acres.
Thanks.
But if you look at the soil mapping, it has all the soil numbers which reference to the key can tell you what it is, whether it's poorly drained or very poorly drained or upland or whatever it might be, moderately well-drained. And all that stuff is in that description. But on our parcel, I don't believe there was any very poorly drained soils.
Okay. I'll look at it again.
And, all right. Any further comment from the board? If not, a motion to continue would be in order. So June, first meeting in June, anybody have that date? A fan?
Our June meeting?
Yep.
The 14th?
It'll be the 14th, yes.
So June 14th is our first meeting. We always set, generally set a deliverables date of a week ahead of time. So make sure any new materials get to us before or by the 7th of June. Is, is June 14th, is that a date that works for you all?
Okay.
Yep. Again, the next meeting in May does, does not seem like a meet, give enough time for, for proper notification to go out and response to come back.
Have they checked?
Any further discussion from the board? If not, a motion to continue to June 14th, deliverables by June 7th.
Just a question.
Yep.
We're not voting to accept the application as complete?
We already did.
No, we did that. We got that under control. And then we, so we accepted the application as complete and then we voted on the development of regional impact.
Okay.
So, so yeah, that's why we're, we're able to have that second vote. So now we'd just be looking to continue at this point.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue case 23-005 SIT to June 14th at 7:00 PM.
Second, with deliverables by, what date was it?
7th, was that the week before?
Okay. So we have a motion by Ms. Mooney, a second by Ms. Bascom, to continue this case to June 14th at 7:00 PM with any new deliverables or amended documents by June 7th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any abstentions, motion carries 6-0. Anybody here from the public? The reason we did not open the public hearing tonight was because of that development of regional impact finding. So this case, no new, no new, butter notices will go out for this. You'll have to follow the case on the planning board website, on the town website. Any new materials will get posted there generally. But again, we will not be discussing this case again until June 14th at 7:00 PM. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on. Other course of business, I'll let, let everybody clear out for a moment and then we'll continue on. So Mr. McKinnon has rejoined the table and has resumed his seat as vice chair and will be, will be voting. So any new votes will be a count of, of seven instead of six at this point. Yeah, thank you very much.
Ian, is your name spelt E-W-U-I-N?
It's my legal name. Ian's my middle name. Yeah.
Okay.
I have a lot of names.
I'm like, is this the same guy?
So the next course of action is we've kind of, we, we haven't made a, there's a vote on the planning board secretary. So I think we wanted to wait till Ms. Mooney was present to, so she could give her, her aye or nay.
Before we reiterate here, before we nominate her.
Nominated her. So Ms. Mooney, are you still accepting of that role?
Yes, I'm willing and able. I have to say that it's a privilege to be able to edit the minutes and be like a step before they go out to the rest of you folks to review. And other responsibilities, taking minutes, site walks.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that, all of that.
And all of that.
Is there any further discussion right now? Or would anybody like to make a motion potentially to nominate?
I move to nominate Sue Mooney as secretary for the planning board.
My second.
That's a motion by Ms. Bascom, a second by Ms. Sandler. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 7-0.
Question for the againsters.
We did get a, we had put out there for an SRPC commissioner representative. We have one already. We have two seats and now they have more, I'm not going to say teeth, but more, more weight to them because there were, will be a dues-paying member. So now we have voting privileges. So we received a letter from Cheryl Smith that's in our packets writing to request consideration to be appointed to SRPC as a member representing Nottingham. Did everybody, does everybody have this letter? If not, I can read it. Okay.
Yes.
So I know Ms. Bascom, you had mentioned, you know, being willing as well. So I don't know if you, if you are still wanting that or if you want to, wanted to have us consider this person.
I, I'd actually like to attend some of the meetings. So I don't know if, like, maybe Charlene can't attend all of them. We, we could swap off or how she'd want to do it. I'd have to talk to her to see what she'd say.
I think we talked about that in the past.
It's a good question. Can we have an alternate?
Right, right.
That, so I think we can always, always attend. It's just that voting privilege is the, now that we have it, is the biggest part.
If I need to be a full-on there to have the voting, I'd, whatever, I'd, I'd be willing to do that.
Blair, do you know that, that answer that for the SRPC commissioners or do they have, do they have alternate options? Can you, or is it the two that you appoint?
Yeah, I think it's just the two, especially for voting purposes. I don't know if we have alternates that are non-voting members. I mean, I can ask Jen that.
Or like an alternative if Charlene can't go.
Yeah, I thought we did.
Teresa can step in and take that voting.
Wasn't Charlene with it with?
Just, because we have two, right? It was Gary and Charlene. And then, but I think, I would assume.
Oh, they weren't like.
They weren't voting.
Yeah.
So it doesn't matter.
We had two, but they were non-voting. Gary's term was up anyway and he's not on our planning board. Charlene.
So we had to identify one of them as like being a voting member.
Well, no, I think we.
No, so Charlene, I believe, I'm happy it's voting purposes because she is our appointed member. But we have two votes. So that's, we have, we can appoint two. So that, I didn't know if we could.
But what if somebody's absent? Could they be an alternate? So we could still have two votes?
Right. So you'd almost have a third person then.
Because we did that, so we see.
Two regular and an alternate just in case.
Yeah. I will ask.
Okay.
Well, we can, I think we could table this unless everyone wants to act on it. I could table it till the next meeting. I can get an answer as to that. And then I'll send out, I'll have, I'll share with Alana or Blair and then we can send it out to the board. And then we can make sure that we address this at the next meeting so we can get our second, second vote one way or the other.
Okay.
That's on.
Yeah. Are we, obviously the bud, are the town budget accounted for the $6,000 something dollars for the dues? But I think we've received confirmation that SRPC's financial calendar runs. Did we still, have we already received our voting rights? Because, you know, there's off calendar there, but.
Yes. I've confirmed with SRPC that although we've not been billed yet for the dues because the way the calendar falls, we, we do have full voting rights at this point.
Okay.
Yep. Dues. It doesn't mention, it's RSA 3646, number three. But it doesn't mention alternates, but we'll confirm and we'll address it at the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send her an email.
All right, thanks. Review planning board action items on vote on hierarchy importance. So I put together my thoughts of what I kind of had as a, as a running list of items for us. I know you all addressed it at, watched the meeting. But so obviously, I think it'd be good for us to kind of set our hierarchy and then we could start working on action plans on how we're going to accomplish that. Fee review, I mean, that's, I consider that pretty much done for the most part, unless we tweak it quite a bit. The only thing I need to do is work with Mr. McKinnon to send off a list to the select board showing any possible suggestions that we had already mentioned at this, at this board.
I have that Excel file. And I think you and I kind of came into possession of a little bit of additional fee information that we might want to look at the addition of restructuring and including escrow. So that's the only thing.
Yep. So we looked at, we got some information. So we've talked about how, how other towns address, like if they use a circuit rider, SRPC, like SRPC or some other regional planning commission for their planners, how do they, because right now we budget that cost to the town and we're paying for it. The town's paying for it. Is there a way to share it or shift it to applicants? And we need to consider that, the balance of that.
Adding a fee to the applications.
Yep. So the town of Litch, the town of Litchfield has, has, requires an escrow, the account, and it's right up front. So a certain amount of money put into escrow, an escrow account for plan review. And hours are based on the, whatever the circuit rider contract is, is how they're billed out. And as it gets depleted, they're required to replenish it. That way the town's not on the hook of, well, we paid the third party because we said yes, and then we never get the money back. So that's something we can consider doing. And that would allow this board to continue operating under our current budget, but have a lot more ability to accomplish a lot more things. Work on the master plan, use, use our hours with SRPC to knock out the master plan, do some of the higher level things that we tend to push off even.
You're saying instead of a fee for just certain applications, that there be another fee on top of it that would go into our fund in order for us to better use of planning board?
To account for the actual cost that an application costs the town.
Yeah, it's kind, it's kind of twofold. So right now, from what we do, right? So taking, we use CMA reviews, right?
Yeah, I know exactly.
So right now, we like.
I just want to figure out how you guys are, how this is planning out, you know, towards.
Yeah, there's kind of, there's almost two potential changes being discussed, right? The escrow is one thing. And that's, it's a very common thing. City of Rochester does it. A lot of the cities do it. And it's, you know, like Alana, you release CMA for the Smoke Street project and you know, that's like whatever, $5,000. The applicant isn't putting that money out. They're agreeing to that amount.
But to pay for.
But the town, we cut a check out of our general fund and then we bill the client through the project. There's a degree of, well, we lose a degree of protection, right? Because if somebody walks away from a project and decides to contest it and says, oh, I don't want to pay that, how quickly could the town, we, our legal fees to try and reclaim that amount would negate that. So the escrow is a way, whether we bill staff at hourly rates for SRPC time or town staff time, the escrow is a good idea on its own to say, you know, I think their Litchfield's numbers were a little high, in my opinion. But it would be, it's making somebody put, you know, a couple thousand dollars in escrow to say, well, we anticipate this. You, they get the money back if we don't use it. But it means we're not, the town's not out that money and has to then be collecting.
Would you base the fee on the amount of lots or how many that they're trying to do? So each lot.
Minor versus major.
Right. So it's a 25-lot subdivision. Maybe each one of those is going to be worth a hundred dollars or each one's going to be worth five or whatever.
You could do it that way, yeah.
And say, okay, if you did a 10 lot, it'd be obviously the same thing, but it'd be 10, but 25. And we base it on per.
Can do it that way, yeah. We can control, so like, for example, they do a minor subdivision or site plan, which would be three lots or units or lots or less, $5,000 straight escrow fee. For major subdivision or site plan, which would be a three-lot or greater subdivision, they have a straight escrow fee of $10,000. I think those numbers are a little high for what we see in terms of review fees. But you could, we could use that and maybe come up with a per fee if it's subdivision. Issues with site plans, you need to have a minimum. And then you could say though, if it's 25-lot subdivision, it might need to be a certain amount per lot. But I think the escrow on its, on its own is a great option. We certainly would have, I'd certainly have questions for the town administrator. There is a process that the town then needs to be aware of to operate those escrow accounts and have the authority to do it. So it's not super complicated once you get it set up, but there is a couple steps there to do it. And I think that's a great protection for the town. And then separately, if we choose to start billing some of the planning staff or SRPC review time on top of, you know, if we send this to CMA, that's kind of a separate thing, which I think you're going to get a little bit more pushback from potential applicants. But I believe legally it's an option to us.
Yeah, so it's some, and I can get this shared. And just, again, I think it's usually our SRPC or our circuit rider contracted planner budget is somewhere in the $26,000 to $30,000 range per year. The big cost of the town, as we go through line items. And, you know, it's a service to the town that the town needs to be able to provide to everybody, but at the same time. And, you know, it's a service to the town that the town needs to be able to provide to everybody, but at the same time, you can make it one of those things where applicants are putting more of the burden instead of just the general town. So I think there's a balance between like what ours are now and there.
When you mention that, so just trying to be simplified for people that are listening, you know, from what you guys are saying. We want, an idea is to put an escrow of X amount of money depending on subdivision size, small, large, maybe an extra large or whatever I ever call it, into an amount, an escrow. Now, that protects us up to the amount of the escrow. If the project demands more money, we're still in the same point if they walk away, we're going to lose that extra half that we confront.
Potentially, you can build in a threshold saying that balance is not allowed to go below 25% of the initial escrow.
Yeah, let's go back to 50.
Watch what I'm saying.
Yeah, they do 50%. So they always keep 50% in the account, and they never let you draw below that. Or they'll stop work until you bring that balance up. I don't think you need to go to that extreme, but it's better than, we have nothing right now, that the town's cutting checks and then hopefully people pay on a timely manner, or else the town's out five grand until somebody cuts a check for five grand.
Well, we do hold escrows for roads.
Right, right, so.
Stuff like this, right?
I just want to make sure that, if that process can be used for...
This is more for the development, design, all that stuff like this, or the escrow. It's for that they pay for that upfront.
Yeah, yep. So like, if Alana got a quote from CMA for $5,000, you know, ideally we would have, your option too is, and Rochester does it this way, they will get that estimate for $5,000, and that's the escrow amount. Or they'll say that plus a percentage to cover any gaps. It doesn't have to be a fixed fee, so they do theirs, they get per project, they get an estimate from their review engineer, for review engineering firms.
Well, if you did it that way, then you'd have to, the...
There's a delay at that point.
Delay, but can legally, if we're making them do it that way, I mean, do they have the choice of getting their home?
Uh, I guess legally they could contest and try and get a different third-party reviewer, but the town's not, we're not contracted through anybody else for peer review.
Just throwing out different, you know, questions that could be asked if somebody says, well, I think you guys are taking me over the coals with this guy here, when I have another guy here.
It has happened.
That's going to do it for, oh, I know, that's why I'm saying. That's why I don't know when I go back, when you ask this question, is whether we do it as an escrow according towards lots in the size of the development and put a general number out there, or do we do it on the way of having them a basis? Because again, if it's, if it's per lot, then you already actually know. And obviously if it exceeds, then we can put a line item on it. It just is whether you need to eat 25% in, you know, for the thing. But then it's hard to contest when it's a single.
Yeah, I mean, the numbers certainly, the details of it are going to be a discussion, but I think it's a good idea to think about.
The simplicity would be the ideal.
Right, and I think that's the...
In an already complex situation, anybody coming in front of this board has to deal with.
Yeah, like Litchfield's just because it was pretty clear, and it's, you know, gives, breaks it down and explains the numbers, but anything we come forward with, we then go to the select board for review and approval, so, you know, we want to make sure that, that we clarify anything that we propose with, with the select board before.
Well, I mean, I think it's a good idea. I just want to make sure that, you know, as much as I can learn and know, you know, to help advocate this situation, you know, to the board or to the board to understand what we're doing. You know, representing this, and they're going to want to see this ahead of time too, so.
Yeah, and I'll get this, I'll share it with everybody else.
Yeah, we have a video.
I just got it. So that's Litchfield on the top, and the bottom is our current, so there might be some fees that we would adjust on ours down potentially and move some others, but.
I think when we get, we get to a point that we have something that we, as a board, would like to do, you know, we'll make sure somebody from the both, the planning board is at the board selection.
To discuss it, yeah.
To discuss it, so.
Yeah, I get it.
We're going to send you in by yourself.
Thinking my thoughts on it was, I mean, we've seen how the budget's gone and how discussions have gone. Trying to, again, not make this process so expensive that, that only developers can afford it, but make sure that we're placing some of the costs where they should be, potentially with the applicant versus, you know, the town footing all of it.
Great.
Besides the third-party reviews, so, the, the engineering reviews, so.
Oh, the, the last thing I'll throw out there, again, we'll work out the details. If somebody, and we had to figure out the process, whether it's a waiver through us or the select board, if somebody came in and say it's a $5,000 minimum escrow, but they're proposing a, and we say site plan, no matter what, it's an escrow, you can get, you can petition for a waiver from any fee, really. So on a case-by-case basis, you know, we do occasionally get somebody coming in representing themselves, and maybe it isn't that complicated, but the goal here is to try and cover as much as possible. It is possible to get a waiver from that escrow, either do a no escrow or define that amount on a case-by-case basis, if needed.
In a terrible situation is you could have three subdivisions going in, and then you could have a 2008 disaster happen, and we've already footed the money for this, and guess what? We're out everything because these aren't going to happen.
We had to pay for it because we contracted for it.
That's what I'm saying, and that's such a, hopefully that'll never happen again, but that's like a worst-case scenario for us.
So the other, a couple of other things, as I watched the meeting, the prior meeting, thank you all for, for being here for that, and sorry that I cannot be for, for it. I just want to clarify a couple of things. Third-party reviews, when I've interacted with town council, and we've had them, council review easement language, maintenance agreements, those kind of things, they're reviewing for the legal standpoint of it. They generally recommend that all other things get reviewed by our third-party engineering firms. That's the stormwater systems and everything else to make sure that those meet design, so. Usually when we send out for third-party review, I include that. I believe it did get included with the case that went out recently, and that's going to be a part of their scope, but, um, so, and then I know the applicant, I heard a question from an applicant on this recently. Third-party review generally is of engineering as well as conformance of town regs. Most of the time we get the comments back, it's, it's, depending on how we narrate the request, a lot of times they are, we're going through our subdivision and zoning ordinances to try to make sure that their, the plans meet the regs, and generally the only thing we're sending out are complex plans, major subdivisions, site plans, and site plan reviews. Minor subdivisions generally aren't getting sent out for that, so. The complexity of those materials can be 50, 60, 100, 200 pages of material. So they're usually going through all of that to, to review. And that was another thing where we said, you know, yes, SRPC does our initial review, but for these very complex cases, we generally should utilize our third-party engineering firm and charge it back because it's, the scope is just too much. So unless that changes or unless the board feels differently, I think that's how we're going to probably continue to go unless we make a motion alibis during a specific third-party review, saying that we don't want them to do that.
I think, no, I agree with you. I think the concern there was, I'm trying to make a point of every engineer is going to do something slightly differently. It was to try and keep it to conformance to the regulations and requirements, not kind of subjective, well, I think you should have done it this way, but it still meets the regulation, it's just I would have done that. So I think that was the concern there. But yeah, I, I agree. I think, you know, we don't change anything the way we've been doing it. That was just a concern from that applicant's representative.
And anything we get back from the third-party, you know, again, it's a report, and it's up to us to accept or not accept those findings, so. They may say, well, it's this, but they may feel like they're wrong because it's subjective. Last thing, I kind of made note of my, to myself, for us to remember, is any applications before us that is proposing a new road, we're supposed to require bonds for, so any that we've approved, the town likely will not issue any kind of building permits for or anything else until they have a bond in place. But realistically, we should be doing that during this process, getting the, an estimate for the, for that amount, and getting a bond put in place for that. It's in our subdivision regs, the whole process aligned is to the amount, how it's...
Ultimately, that's included as a condition, as part of the conditions, right?
It should be. So we don't, I think we had a road, well, we just finally approved one. But we don't see a lot of prior roads necessarily, so that's, that's another piece just for us to kind of keep in our, our minds. Yeah, okay. So run down the list and jump in if, if anybody wants to, but site plan subdivision reg updates, I think Blair may have had a running list of items that we were talking about. If not, we'll find those and go through them. But at minimum, I know we have some updates dependencies and things like that, so I'd say we do that sooner than later, if possible. Because I think it was pretty, a lot of cleanup, and then now that we've got the driveway setbacks, roadway setbacks, we put that in zoning, so that's there, so we don't need to put it in subdivision, unless you feel like we should. But other than that, it's just a public hearing, and then, and then we can accept it. That's not a warrant article, town vote. So, just housekeeping. Application hearings guide, findings of fact, review of other edits. Did you guys knock that one out last week? No? Two weeks ago?
We did, we kind of did some of the crew we had here, and it was delayed, so we...
So I don't think this is something we have to, we have to accept or approve or whatever. We have our application hearing kind of checklist, you know, numbered one through 14 previously. We were just proposing adding a 15, which was the findings of fact, which we did, Alana?
Yeah.
Thank you. So we've got that on there, so, look, check one off. Boop. Impact fees, this is definitely something we need to address this year. We're up on our, our time for when those are supposed to be re-reviewed or amended or approved. I did reach out to SRPC to see if there's anybody doing these assessments or plans. We use Bruce Mayberry in the past, BCM Planning. I don't think he's in business anymore. There's another individual that SRPC connected me with. I sent them an email with a link to our current impact fees and the assessments. And requested they kind of give us some information on, on how we might be able to move forward, and if, if, I'll have to work with potentially town administration on, on what the process would look like on that, if we're required to do a new assessment and get, what do you call them?
You do the whole thing, and it was not...
Request for proposals, or if we can just, you know, go from there, so I guess more to be on that, but I would like us to hopefully have something to do on that by, by July. That'd be my goal. So that one's kind of a high priority.
I agree. Because I think we've heard some, and we have you on here, likely zero out the fire. I want to be able to, hopefully it's one thing, like if you zero it out, if you have to keep it at a dollar, can you zero it out and still keep the line item, so again, you can amend it relatively? It's probably harder to put it back in and take it out entirely, so.
Yep.
And I know there's, 2017, I want to say, the recreation portion was added.
Yeah, I forgot it was that long ago.
You know, we're always getting a lot of questions, and it's, it's a big item on the town budget year to year, and I think we've, if you've kind of followed the news for the board of selection and public works, there are quite a few public works projects that some of us have seen. One-lane roads because bridges are failing and stuff like that, but that cost's got to be covered, and, you know, as part of this revaluation, does there need to be an impact fee related to public works? Because again, more people on the roads is impacting, even if it's not that road, we all travel across, you know, three, four roads to get across town if we're going to bring interference, so. So it's something to consider when obviously we got to look at everything with this guy.
Yeah, and to add a new one, I can't remember if it just, it becomes a couple of public hearings or if I have to go to a warrant article.
I looked at the minutes, I believe that was, and if board of selection, I think, was involved at some point kind of hosting that.
Yep. So I'm trying to find, again, I remember roads and such had a, you're limited as where you can apply.
Yeah, very specific, yeah.
Offset exactions are a good, good potential opportunity for larger subdivision or site plans as opposed to an impact fee, but we could definitely make sure we look at that too if, if it's in line, because I do not...
We control the amount too. It's not like we're going to put $1,000 per, you know, building property cost.
I got a question. Why are we zeroing out the fire? I know that it was, we had the money set for...
The bond.
The bond, but having more homes and having more responses means we're going to need more vehicles at some point, so I don't, and need to add on to the fire department. So why would we zero that out?
So the impact fees go hand-in-hand with the capital improvement plan, so if there's nothing, if there's nothing forecasted within the CIP, that's where most of this comes from, so if there was something proposed for an expansion to the fire department or a new vehicle's being required, not a replacement vehicle, but a new vehicle because of the expansion of the town.
Correct.
Those are things that potentially can get applied to impact fees, so that's one of those things where we'd have to vet that out and find out, is there anything planned like that? And if there is, then yes, we would incorporate that into the...
So maybe that's something we should ask before we zero that out.
Of course.
That's what we're trying to get a handle on, because is it six years? If, if there's a window of time, right? If that, if you pay an impact fee, if it's not utilized by the account within six years, it's returned to you.
Correct, I remember.
I don't know how you control who paid what, but...
Current owner. It goes back to the current owner.
Yeah, it doesn't matter who, it's, it's the current owner or the resident of the address.
Correct, not the one who may have built it or...
Right, but I'm saying like in terms of, if they're pulling money out, is it just whoever paid in first, and then it's, they're just pulling away, yeah.
So you're on, it does, we have a master list.
It's in order, yeah.
Everybody from the year that they paid in, and as the years go by, if you happen to make it that we don't use, like I said, some people, I think the school actually might have actually went to a plan where they didn't use it. And they got, actually, the people got the money back.
Correct.
Because the school didn't spend the money that was for it.
I found interesting, I hear them talking about using the fees, and then we kind of never hear about it.
They gave you some. These specifications of, even when you go, like, just talking about another fire truck, well, I don't think you can use the impact fees on a new fire truck when you're using it as a replacement for a whole fire truck.
Right.
That's what the capital improvement...
You know, but if you were bringing something in that was non-relevant, that we never had, or doing something like this, maybe then that's where the fee could be used at, but it has to be something out of the...
Typical.
Exactly.
And we also have to look at the actual language of our impact fees, of how they were adopted, because the fire, typically may have mentioned the bond, so that could be, that could be a part of it.
It was written the way it was, was for the fact that, so towns would not misuse the funds.
Okay.
Can't be a general fund, yeah.
It's not a maintenance.
It had to be all, it all had to come down to the fact of, based on, the reason for having the fees was due to the fact of the growingness of the town, they should take some of the offset costs off the residents that already live in town by having the new houses.
Right.
So knowing that somebody builds a new house, you think, even though the $6,000 doesn't cover anything for the student that's going into the school for the eight years, is going to be here, but it was still just a, you know, if they ever had to add the classroom or do something in addition, then that would be covered, but not a renovation.
Yeah, it's a proportionate share of costs based on the town's investment in infrastructure to accommodate that.
The growingness of the town, correct.
But our specific language...
Is that a new word?
Yeah, I thought it was something.
I wrote it down.
Our specific, our specific impact fees have language to them, and we'd have to just make sure we're in line with that. The master plan, again, we'll, we'll have to start putting together a committee for that, so I guess, Alana, if we can get a, yeah, if we can get a, maybe, maybe put a, an item on the website saying that we're looking for volunteers to serve on the master plan committee, we can, as we start to get some of those, we can look to form that committee.
How many members do you think we're in need?
Uh, it depends on how we address it. If we'd go chapter by chapter, or just pull out a few chapters, identify which ones we think are most imperative at this point. Then we can look to get certain community members for that section, so ideally at least three to have a quorum, but I would say...
Maybe it'd be five.
Five would be great.
Does it have to be three planning board members, plus like a minimum of three from the board or just?
You should like one planning board, conservation commission, select person, or ZBA, and a couple of people from the community.
Yep.
Five is really a good group number to get things done without being locked down.
And that also allows for when there's vacancy or, you know, absences, they continue moving on, so. So again, I guess it goes back to my first discussion point of the fee review, so if we can free up some funds, not that SRPC necessarily has the time to start working on anything for us, but if we can identify some funds that we may have available to allow us some more budgeted hours, and I've not asked them on that, but it's in our contract, so it's one of those things we can expend money on. We might be able to get some, some assistance there, and then grant opportunities to look into as well. See if budget items can be created for a fund this, every five to 10 years, including community engagement. That'd probably be a warrant article and I do have that. I do have, I think I have all these items outlined and emailed to the new town administrator as well. Um, so she knows what we are looking at besides site, besides our regular day to day. Uh, what we're looking at and what we're working on. Um, so at some point, uh, when she gets some breathing room. I expect she's probably going to come in and have a meeting with us and just have a sit down. So we can all meet her and, um, kind of go over some of these thoughts and. And anytime someone comes in from another town, it's helpful because they may have seen things that work better that we're doing or, you know, give us some pointers. So. And that's one of the items I don't know if we can add as a warrant article for like C I P does, you know. Put aside some money every year for, to make sure we, we stand.
I think like the reassessing thing, they put, we put five grand a year into reassessing. So five years, you know.
Yep. And the community engagement to me is the key part for when you're looking at a master plan. Uh, looking to schedule a Z B A joint meeting. We usually do that and invite the conservation commission, building inspector. Any town departments, fire chief, police chief, um, town administrator, anybody that wants to attend. Uh, we usually schedule that late summer, July, August. We can do that now for a meeting if we want. Um, just get it on the books and make sure everybody's ready or we can wait till we get a little closer.
Should you ask the zoning boards if they are presently coming up to a meeting? Don't you have a meeting coming up?
I have a meeting next week. Yep. We do.
Or an hour later.
Wouldn't you invite them here?
Yeah.
So we're gonna have meetings scheduled already. And since their meetings aren't actually scheduled, they're more on.
It depends on whether I have a case for these. Do we have anything that looks like it might be coming for?
Well, this is they're coming here.
Okay.
So how about this? I would propose.
Wouldn't you ask?
August twenty third is our second meeting in, uh, in August. We could, we could make that. The sole business for that night. If we do it out and book it out now.
Sure.
Would you put that on the Z B A agenda for me, please?
Sure.
Thank, thank you.
So, yeah, proposing that we hold a joint planning board's Z B A meeting, uh, and invite the conservation commission. And extend invite to all town departments, um, building inspector, fire, police, um, highway and town administrator, uh, for August twenty third. And make that, um, the sole, well, we won't be holding any public hearings that.
On non-business.
And just to be clear with people at home, the reason why we have this meeting is for.
So the reason we have this meeting is for, yeah, great. We tried to do it before, uh, we get into zoning amendment warrant article season. Um, so it's a good chance for everybody to touch base, see what's working well, what's not working well, where there's maybe areas that we can, uh, free up. Uh, we did it a few years ago, like for zoning where we amended a few things, which eliminated a lot of things going before Z B A for variances. That, that were ended up becoming just more of a, uh, housekeeping item. Um, so, so we, things like that. So, and then also identify areas where we mean, may need to focus our, uh, any potential warrant articles on. So address concerns from the building inspector, fire, fire, highway, uh, police. To see where other areas, you know, cause we'll have our action list normally and then we'll kind of review it and go through to, uh, identify a hierarchy. So it's just a good chance for everybody to get together in public and have a meeting and.
Basically, so what you're saying is that for this meeting here, we're gonna be asking if the highway department has any input on what they think on our regulations on subdivisions, roads, houses, something like this. You know, police on what they think for. Lighting or anything to do with criminal wise, that's gonna resort for planning purposes. And then again, fire for the same thing, whether it, this certain development should always have cisterns or these should automatically have this. Whether these things should be maybe added to our zoning regulations or should be kept to the way it is.
All, all of the above. Yeah. And it's also a good chance.
I'm just saying this so that people can understand why, what we're, and they come here, what we're asking them and what we're gonna be talking about. So it's just more clear to them to be.
We'll have an agenda, but it'll also be open discussion.
And it's also open discussion, allow them to freely discuss with us and just have that, um, the back and forth. So we, we tend to not see them in person as much, you know, send out the plans. Uh, so it gives them this chance and also for the board to, to discuss kind of like if anything we're seeing. Um, I know there was, I'd received comment recently about. You know, it's a kind of a good practice to see plans that we, any site that we approved previously, maybe two years ago, three years ago, 10 years ago, drive around. Kind of if you still have the plans, see what would, what it looked like on paper, see how it actually came to fruition and see how it's holding up. So, um. You know, the drainage structure specifically, you know, during the big rainstorms, are they doing what they're supposed to do? Uh, driveways that, um, maybe were installed, but weren't, weren't negatively sloped from the road like they're supposed to. To make sure that the water coming off the driveway in mud and everything else isn't going into the roadway, um, that it's going into a ditch, things like that. So make sure that whatever we see is, is clear, get feedback, but also receive feedback from all those departments. I know the building inspector has given us a few lists in the past. Um, we've addressed some of those items. Um, we can see how it's going and if there's other things that are coming up. A lot of, you know, enforcement items and things that.
Well, to that end too, I think most, if we approve a site plan or subdivision includes a stormwater report with an operation and maintenance manual. I'm pretty sure, you know, especially if it requires a state permit, there's a yearly reporting requirement. They have to submit at least a yearly report to, uh, based on the O N M inspections to the town. I have no idea if we have a file where we receive inspection reports on, you know. I mean, some, there's obviously in the last five years, there has been a number of subdivisions that most certainly had operation and maintenance manuals. And I bet if we pulled those, there is a requirement every year, usually by, you know, they choose a date, whether it's by December thirtieth or something. You have to file a, a yearly inspection for.
Yeah.
I don't know if we, the, the issue is like, who does that go to and who checks it? But, um, it's usually the building inspector or the town administrator and then they figure it out. But I don't know if we're actually receiving those.
Yeah, they could be the highway agent.
Yeah. But yeah, that's true. So I don't know if we are receiving those.
That's a good, good question. That's a good question.
So a lot of me look through your files and see if there's anything that stands out, but, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, yeah, we, that's a good thing. We really fear who those go to, but, um.
Well, and that's the thing. Once, once the, once the subdivision or site plans approved by this board, we're not an enforcement arm. So it's done. It's, once we've approved it and it's out there, you know, and the conditions are met. That point it goes to, it's not passing the box, but it, it is in a way, building inspector, highway agent and, and the other departments, um. Specifically to, to make sure that they're meeting zoning and, and everything else. What's being built is correct and up to, up to snuff.
I would just hate to see us continue to approve operation and maintenance manuals that have that requirement at our level. And then there isn't either, either we're not rewarding it right, or it's maybe it's needs to specifically be called out in conditions. So that it's something that is the public works and building inspector is aware of. Cause you're right, somebody, we don't review those, but somebody in the town does. But yet we're the ones approving the documents that establish that.
And it's also ways for us to find ways to improve. Like, um, now I go through and I see some of the subdivisions and, and I see some that were done very well. And, uh, and they have great, great buffering. So you don't necessarily see it from the regular road that was already there. And others, you know, it's, it's a, I guess, orthometrist standing out and doesn't fit, uh, because there's no buffer. So I think we're, we've been much better on that and making sure, um, that that's accounted for in, in newer subdivisions. But, um, it's just a place to improve. So. Uh, processes and procedures with the land use clerk. So again, that's probably just one of those items that we'll add, uh, as Alana continues to get, uh, get streamlining and, and, and in that role. And, um, what I was, my goal when I add this here is that at some point, it'd be good for us to have just like a clear flow of understanding. What happens from application coming in to everything to, to the end. So, and who's responsible for it? So I became painfully aware when there was a vacancy in that position of how much that position does. I knew they did a lot. Um, and I'm very thankful to have Alana in that position now. Uh, but I didn't realize how much, you know. You know, I was fielding twenty, thirty plus emails a week and, uh, didn't like it. So a lot of buffers quite a bit. Um, so again, I think it's good just for the perpetuation purposes. Make sure that we know who, where, when, and if, if there's a gap somewhere in any of those steps, who to go to for the answer. Um, and then we had the town administrator vacancy too. So that, that didn't help. C I P, uh, again, that's our purview. So unless there's a warrant article to shift it, uh, away from us, um, that will be our role for this fall. To make sure that we put together that subcommittee and, and run it. So just keep that in mind that come budget season, we will, uh, have a C I P committee. And it'll be fall to this board to run it. Um.
I thought Ben brought that up and it was hidden. I thought that came up in one of the recent board of select meetings. What about, I thought Ben had mentioned to that end, but said, well, maybe do we just keep it the way it was? And I don't know where that conversation.
Well, that was discussed. It was to have with you guys.
Yeah. So, so again, uh.
But still in limbo, we might, but we might want to expect it to come our way.
Well, that is probably what we wanted to do. We're talking about action items, the stuff that we're talking about. That's why he's bringing it up, right? That's why we're gonna, yeah, cause the board, I mean, the board always took care of it, but if you read into the statute and stuff, whatever, it's supposed to be a planning board operation. Cause it is resorted into planning of future expenditures for the town, but it's for planning things. So, but. It's gonna be all the same members, same people around.
We just run it.
You're just basically now gonna be organizing, uh, and we'll be obviously representing the board's life and somebody playing on representative, you know. A public, a lot of people in it.
So yeah, some more to come on that one. So I guess we're not really knocking too many of these out, but, uh, warrant articles, again, that's just a reminder. October through December, at some point we'll be looking at those, make sure we get stuff ahead of time and hopefully don't end up, uh, last minute. Um, we were talking about passing costs of review, second criteria. Uh, so those are things I've got. And hopefully, hopefully our, our caseload eases up a bit and we get more of those second meetings in the month to, to act, to act on, uh, on a lot of this stuff. I'm not gonna hold my breath because it's been pretty busy and it seems like it's gonna continue to be busy. So we, no, no other new applications that between. What we have now and, okay, great.
These are enough.
So.
So we're still only at one application for next meeting, then we just did one for.
We should have, uh, engineering review. They're gonna do their best to get that to us seven days ahead of time. So hopefully by next Wednesday, um, we'll have that. Um.
I'm gonna ask on that.
Yep.
Ed, when we don't get information from the applicants seven days ahead. Do we just tell them that they didn't make the deadline and we'll have to push the meeting out?
We've.
Cause I, I, I just want to say that for things like that these, the squint case and the case we've got that we're gonna be seeing next. That we've already, um, the subdivision.
Yep.
Getting stuff the day of is, I mean, if you've got jobs or other things you're doing, trying to catch up with all of these emails and stuff when you get home. And wrapping your head around the whole thing is not really fair.
Yeah.
I'd prefer to come to a meeting planned. I mean, I'm prepared, not scrabbling around.
Sure. So I guess, um, you know, the, the on my list did, to talk about good firm preferred preference of delivery items, uh, for everybody. So put my way back hat on. Uh, it used to be the plans were here. Everything was here in the, in the land use office. And the only way to get them was to come in and read the plans. Um.
Right.
I, I, I pushed for and the board pushed for at some point that the applicant give us stuff electronically. So that we get it up online so that it, and then, uh, land use clerk will, will email us when we have items to, that are new, that are online. Um, so we can look at it, but I, I like the online option because it makes it accessible to everybody, including any of butter or anybody in the public that's interested. Cause it might be hard to make it into the, to the office to review anything. So that was my big push for that was primarily making sure everything is, is online. That should be so that we can, everybody has a chance to view it. And then the third part was, um, pushing. I like the thought of, of getting things mailed out to everybody. So we have it in hand. You have a much better chance to look at it. It's in your hand to remember and look at it. Um, whether everybody does or not, that's up to every member, but it was always to have that opportunity. So, um. So for the applicant side of things, we usually set the deliverable date and if they don't get something to us before that seven days or, or within that seven days. Then it's usually, this board is always taking it case by case. So it depends on what it is.
Correct. Okay.
Big of a difference it is. So if it, if it's minor revisions, we've usually gone forward with it. If it's something major, it's a major change, then yeah, we need, I think a continuance at that point is probably the best course of action. Because it, um, you know, we, we need time to, to review and make sure that we're not gonna miss something.
But we'll make those, we've made those motions for the continuance at the meeting because it's, or I mean, you can put the option on and say the applicant can request the continuance. But, um, we've certainly had cases where we've said to the person like, we can't digest all this. We'll talk to you, but we're gonna continue.
But our, but our deliverable timeline makes it difficult on, almost impossible if we're looking for mailing of them or even present, putting in the office. For the land use clerk position in that if our deliverable timeline is seven days ahead, that's a Wednesday. Um, land use clerk has very limited hours. Based on the budget. So, or if we make it a Friday, so then it's got to put together, copied and then put in the mail. But most likely you're not gonna get it Monday, Tuesday. So that goes back to, well, they met the deadline. I mean, so it's on us to make sure that. Our deliverable deadline is, is advanced enough. So in those cases, that's the ones where, you know, I rely more on the land use clerk when they email us and say. You received these updated items. They're on, they're, they're posted online and, you know, they'll either be in your packet or they'll be mailed depending on, you know, how much time is between, is between. So. Um, I like paper, but, uh, for some stuff, but, um.
Well, some things like, uh, this would be miserable to look at online, at least for me.
If you're not used to it, it's, it's hard. Yeah.
My online is my cell phone. I am not gonna be able to see plans and all that stuff. That's why I'm a pain. I'm sorry. But it's, it's better for me to have the paper.
Yeah. Yeah. I like the paper too. I like both.
I agree.
So I, but again, it depends on for, so it's easier for new, new materials, new applications. It's easy. Cause we have a set deadline. Boom. Gives us enough time to get it and get it in the mail, uh, generally. So now I think, so we can go through it again for preferences. Um, or if you haven't already, just email, uh, Alana and say, my preference for document delivery of the application materials is mail or I'll pick up. Or, you know, I'll just review it online. Um, that way we can all just get it clear and, uh, or we can just make, make it that we mail out everything to everybody. And, uh, so there's, I don't know if that'd be easier for you, uh, than, than instead of.
That's fine. I mean.
Going through.
I'm doing one, but it's all together. It doesn't matter.
Yeah.
The applicant pretty much like provides the packets. So it isn't too hard.
Yeah. I just didn't know if it's easier for you to just say, I'm just gonna mail it to every member versus I'm gonna mail it to this one, this one, this one, this one wants it online. This one wants to pick it up, you know.
I don't mind.
I wanted to follow up this.
All right. So email Alana your preference, please. Um, and we'll again, try to honor it as best as, as possible. Um.
So the real question is, is seven days long enough for deliverables now?
No.
And the, the tough thing is when we, if we're continuing two weeks out, um, that's.
Well, don't continue in two weeks.
Right.
I was gonna say, that's a product of a board that has two meetings a month. You're inherently gonna have.
Yeah.
That timing issue.
So I guess that's something for the board to continue to think about if it's major revisions and stuff. I think two weeks and continuing out a month is probably better.
Like we did tonight.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do we, do we, do we by any stretch make that a burden on the applicant?
As in requiring them to wait?
Right. You know, cause I mean, every, every longer we wait, you know, potentially it could be costing this applicant more money.
Yeah.
So I, we have to consider that also in this.
Yeah.
Well, what, what we could do is we could have, if there's any major changes in the paperwork. Then bump them up two weeks from, uh, in other words, if, if they were set for to come in in two weeks, but they send in, uh. Correct the paperwork, seven days ahead, but it's too, it's too much to handle, then we bump them for two weeks then.
Before the meeting or at that meeting? Yeah.
Before the meeting.
That, that's what we did tonight.
No, what he's saying is like, so if, if, uh, somebody had been continued to tonight, but we got all the materials by Monday. Could before this meeting, could you continue them? And I think the tricky part there is they would have to request the continuance.
Okay.
From the board perspective, we, cause we have to make a motion if we want to continue it. They can request a continuance to a different date. And we've, I, I, I know, I, I've dealt with in the past. We can suggest that they continue. Um, you can't force them to, cause it's, if they're scheduled for a meeting, they have the right to be there. But not to say it happens all the time, but a town planner will say, well, I recommend. you wait because it's not, you know, you don't have everything that we need, so.
But we still have the purview to have a, two weeks, have the paperwork had two weeks. We don't have to have it just seven days.
No. No, we did, we, I think we've always erred on trying to be fair to applicants. And fair, by fair, I mean, we try to, to move, move stuff along for both board, the town and the applicant, one way or the other. But like, what I think you're getting to is we need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence on it. So I think, again, it's probably case by case so we can determine as a board that our standard should be more of continuing thirty days and then do a two week deliverable. Or just continue to do it case by case where it's minor things, because the, the problem is, you know, if you continue thirty days and then there's again revisions and, you know, so you, that, those timelines start going pretty long and.
But wouldn't, the needs will get smaller and smaller for, as, I mean, because.
You would hope.
You figure, what, true, but I'm thinking, you, you figure like an application being complete, you've got most of the stuff, but there were things like tonight that we just needed changes and revisions to. But as you go along, don't those, at least they used to, back when I was on the board before, you get less and less what you need from them because.
As long as something new comes up.
Correct. Right. Right.
Which I think is the case. And I think that's what we've run into with these two cases, is that we have done the thirty days. But most cases, like you can do the two weeks and they can usually turn stuff around or the changes.
Because it's short.
Insignificant enough that we can work through, you can review right before the meeting usually, like a plan change and be like, all right.
Yeah, because it's something specific and, and not entire.
For the vast majority, I'd say that's the case, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Or oftentimes they're actually delayed because the way the Concom schedule works, something like that, like they need to go see Concom and they need to skip a meeting because of that or something.
Yes, I think.
The case by case still kinda, the way we have to go.
But I think everybody being cognizant of Mr. Davies' points on that is important that we continue to be cognizant of, if these are major changes, then we're gonna need more time to make sure that materials get here. We can review them, staff can review them. If we have to send them out to a third party, they can review them, you know, if they have time to do so before the meeting. That's, that's the nice thing about two weeks on certain things, is if, if CMA is involved or the third party engineer, we get to them and they may be able to get it back to us seven days advance of the meeting and then we have, you know, we can have it reviewed, which will actually help the applicant in the long run too. All right. So again, I guess if you come up, anybody else comes up with anything that I missed on this list, please let it, let me know. Otherwise, I'll probably start working with Ian and Alana to try to get some of these things on agendas or more, more focused.
The fees first, I think.
Yeah. And then, and again, and hopefully I'll get some more information on impact fees and how we can get those off our, not off our plate, but addressed. All right. Next on the agenda, do any of us have anything else? I'm sorry. Agenda, agenda, agenda. Okay. And Ms. Bascom, it, it contacted me on this to keep it in front of us. To see if we, I wanted to put it before the board to see if we wanted to submit any kind of comment to the DES or the state, you know, it's not DES, the state. Parks Department, Parks Department regarding their planned expansion of Pottockway State Park campground there. They, the state had a public meeting with the Select Board that was well attended, I believe. And I previously checked with council on this, if we have any kind of.
It wasn't the Select Board. That was actually the Pottockway Lake Improvement Association. They hosted the meeting here at the town.
Pottockway Lake Improvement Association, that's PLIA, not the Select Board, so I do apologize. But I believe it was well attended. I previously checked with council when this came up to see if we have any purview of it. We don't. The state's a state. We are not the parents of the state. So, but we are allowed to submit comment on behalf of the board. So if anybody would like, I can definitely draft a letter stating any of our thoughts. My thoughts are the increased potential, things I would like to see, make sure that there's thought given to the quality of Pottockway Lake. Make sure there's no degradation or further degradation there in the access. The increased burden on, potential burden on police, fire, and our road crews, specifically our emergency personnel and that we are the first responders for that.
That's what I was gonna ask. Are we, we're still primary, correct? Even though Raymond's closer?
I believe so, yep. And that's why you've seen a lot of rescues in the state park be done by our fire department. And when that pulls our fire department away, and obviously mutual aid has to come in, but that definitely probably leaves a gap in coverage for, for us. It's, you have to go through Raymond to get there.
Can I ask why that is?
Why what?
Why is, why is it that we are the first responders when Raymond is?
Because it's in Nottingham.
Because what?
It's in Nottingham. So even though you have to go through Raymond to get there, that the actual campground, state park portion is in Nottingham. So that's a, so we've become first, first response. So how it acts, works in, in practice, I don't know. But I know I've seen them a number of times last year and the year before where our, our emergency personnel were, were all that way. And I believe our police have to patrol it. So those would be my kind of generalized comments. I think we'd use similar. So it's traffic.
There's a reason that our road there is a state maintained.
Also septic overloads has been an issue. Several that failed and they haven't rectified them yet.
Well, and I think to be clear too, even though the state, you know, in the, the state, again, they can kind of, I don't wanna say do what they want, but they get to skip a lot of the, the review process because they're at the top of the chain. It's the same, like just a municipality also has certain privileges that a private landlord doesn't when they're on town land doing a new building, but that's.
These questions were brought up.
Yeah.
All right. And we were assured, but again, it's from the state, so we all, whether we agree or not with that, is they were meeting all their same requirements as anybody else, individuals, residents.
Yep.
For setbacks, for everything that they had to do according to the lake.
They still actually have to submit oftentimes for internal permits, that they submit a shoreline permit.
How far the.
They're the applicant and they're the reviewer.
Back from the lake and, you know, they couldn't be, they're on water access properties or, so their major thing is to do is to make this more of a, an RV park rather than a, I think they'll have showers, they'll still have showers and the toilets are there, but it's.
Self-contained.
It's more supposed to be an RV. What they wanna do is add a separate dumping station which would go into that pre-existing septic. And it's high on the hill, so it drains real good right down. If you saw the location of where it is.
Downhill.
Yeah. But then, you know, plans to move the store to a different location, it's like that.
They just be adding to a known problem system instead of.
Well, the state doesn't, the state doesn't see a problem. What if they do see the problem that, you know, whether they fix it or not based on revenues, since it is the second most popular visited state park in the state of New Hampshire. And for the revenue purposes, what it brings in, you know, you can't, I mean, they do work every year on it. Every winter they're doing something on the thing. So it's, there's constant work being done there for updating and renovating towards what they're doing. I don't know because they don't tell us.
John, bouncing off what you said, is, is one of the big revenue makers for the state. They depend on the towns they're in to provide police and fire, but they, we don't get any recompense for that. Should we consider maybe the RV schedule?
I don't think we can. I think we do.
They might get a pension.
I think we actually do get paid something from the state when we do have to have emergency calls. And remember when the ambulance goes out, that's billed right to the, that's right billed to the person who's, who's using the ambulance.
Well, the forest fire, wasn't that actually like billed back to the state or something?
Yep.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's not, you know, police action where some people are drunk in the state park doing something. I don't know.
Fourth of July.
Back or anything for that, but I'd have to ask the chief on how that pay schedule works or how that works. I don't, I don't know.
Most detail related, I doubt they're able to.
But anytime it's a big incident, because we only have one cruiser on, usually, you know, if it's a Friday night, we usually only have one person that's patrolling the town. So if he's going over there, greatly relied on mutual aid, the state trooper probably supporting them back up, a reigning cop supporting him as backup.
On Northwood.
Or, or it depends where the location is. If you're on the backside of the park, if it's Deerfield, who knows?
Right. Something to nothing, is my opinion.
So a lot, a lot of things there. So again, more than happy to write a letter from this board, just again, within our purview. Within our purview, I don't see any harm in submitting a letter. And again, I think it's, but I just wanted to put it before the board, see.
I think the water, the water quality and traffic, they don't wanna throw just a bunch of darts at the wall. I think those are two important items that, yeah, I think we can focus on.
Yeah. So what I'm hearing is, again, subsurface systems, we would, if this was before the board, we would require those to be reviewed and approved and make sure that anything is.
Operating properly.
Is operating properly.
Well, and do we know how many slots they're planning on putting in at this point?
It's like thirty. Yeah, it's like thirty or thirty-five.
I was just thinking, all of that with all their boats going on the lake and.
Well, their boat, they're not, they will, those lots that they're proposing are not gonna be.
They're uphill, yeah.
Are not gonna have any more lake access than what they already offer now.
Most.
Or the amount of boats that go in this year, even when they add the thirty-five sites, is probably not going to change that much because when you take that number of how many boats go in, you really gotta look on the day, the amount of people, because just regular public access to the state park can vary. You know, you even look at the numbers from the Lake Association at the Boat Ramp. One year it could be down if it's a real rainy year, or a warm year. If it could be all sunny and beautiful on the right weekends, it could be a freaking zoo. So I think the lots over there, it's more for the fact of environmentally, whether it's going to affect the, you know, the septic system is more my biggest concern would be.
Well, we know the lake already has problems usually.
Yeah, especially when you're adding, you're adding new bathrooms and stuff, but then you're adding a dump station. And I don't know how much a thirty-two foot RV has for a tank if it's a hundred, two hundred gallons, but what they bring in, what they put out, you know, that might come in full dump, come out. I'm sure the state's gonna have a fee for them to dump.
There's a calculation for campgrounds and all that.
So.
Yeah. So that, those are all, so.
If you feel like drawing something up, go for it. I don't know the, I mean.
I'll draft something.
Say we wrote something.
Then that's, then absolutely.
And again, for anybody else that has some of those other items that were mentioned, I think are very important, like some kind of feedback to the town, that would have to come from the state. So that's probably a good letter to write to our representatives. If you feel so inclined, they would be the ones that would be able to kind of work on any legislation to change that or to apply more, more money to host communities, especially ones like ours where we're probably seeing very little other benefit of it because we have limited commercial. So we're not getting a lot of revenue that way, whereas Raymond is probably doing pretty well where they have the restaurants really close to it.
How about writing the letter and then just see seeing our reps?
Sure.
That way, and then they have notice.
And, and Senator Pearl, because he's the one I've been talking to about this. And he has gone ahead and talked with the state parks. Like I said, he was willing to come and speak, the, the state park guy and, and Senator Pearl, to see what our concerns were.
I will get that drafted up. We'll send it to the land use clerk and ask, I'll find out who all these individuals are and their contact information and I'll ask that it come from the land use office, if that's okay. Great. Thanks. All right. So I'll work on that. Public comment, this is the time of night where we always reserve time to let anybody from the public come forward to, to talk to us and ask questions. Nobody's here, so, but I just wanna make that clear that we always reserve time for that. We have two sets of minutes. Do you guys wanna address these now, table them?
Hit the four twelve, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm four, four twelve, I was good with. I only had one question. I'll make it quick. So let's address four twelve. Line two forty-five, where it says the best way to log hours, oh, I'm sorry, two forty-six. Currently, the applicant gets billed for the time that town council spends reviewing a project. I don't know if that's what I said, or it's, because I don't think that's actually happening, but the third party review gets billed to the applicant. So when we send stuff out to the town engineer, that's what, that gets billed back to the applicant. We have to take a look and see if town council's time actually gets billed back or can be. So that'd be my only amendment.
Some cases, I think it should, based on how much back and forth occurs.
Sure, especially when there's review of, of legal documents, like easements, maintenance agreements.
Yeah.
Conservation deeds and easements and things that are gonna be recorded at the registry. But that's not there. That was it for, that I had for the twelfth.
On, on the April twenty-sixth minutes, on page two, between page two and three in your folders, is a section when I was editing. I, I, I wasn't at the meeting, so I just tried to decide or discern what was meant. And it's in highlighted yellow. And I had two questions in that paragraph. Were you all there?
I am.
Page twenty-six.
Here.
Pages two and three. It's a single page.
Is it two?
To ensure that there's ample area between the Peekaboo subdivision in the north. Wait a minute. Okay. To ensure there's ample area between the Peekaboo subdivision and the existing Little River homes in that area, the applicants have kept the boundary lines. So what boundary lines are we talking about? Frontage boundary?
No, they proposed the rear lot lines of these parcels to be one hundred feet off.
Okay.
The perimeter, the existing perimeter boundary, so.
The buffer.
Yeah. So they, that, I guess I was, you know, thinking back on that, I was also a little confused. I think there was a question from the applicant's side of, you know, if the buffer was needed. And my understanding is if you're putting a lot line there, that's sort of, that satisfies the, the legal lot line that now satisfies and locks in that hundred foot buffer, so.
So should we have kept the rear boundary lines back one hundred feet? Ian, is that right?
Yes. Yes, correct.
And then the next one, ordinarily, they would not have to do that, but believe ample area is available, so the one hundred foot buffer should be adequate? The, the real words in here were should be held back. I don't know what they.
So I guess the applicants have kept the lot boundary lines back one hundred feet because it's the individual lots that will have their boundary lines one hundred feet from the parent.
This is where I think they were interpreting that they also needed some other hundred foot buffer thrown in there. I agree that the held back part, reading it back, didn't make sense. But to what you said, I think it should be, the intent there is that they believe that that is adequate. And I guess I would agree, but I think that was the intent.
So the one hundred foot buffer will be provided?
Yes. Yeah. Because the held back kind of.
I have no idea.
It was confused, yeah. I didn't say adequate or what you just said.
I think Rachel just transcribed me from what she hears.
Yep. Yeah. That was the intent, just to say it satisfies the requirement.
About, so the one hundred foot buffer satisfies the requirement?
Yeah, I think that works. That's a good interpretation, I think, the intent.
Did you get that?
If you can, let's see if you can mail through.
Do you want a motion to approve the minutes of April twelfth?
Yeah, April.
And.
Twelfth and the twenty-sixth is amended.
Wanted to do, okay, you, one, you can do it as one, you want it as one?
Sure.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes dated April twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three for the planning board as written and amended for April twenty-sixth.
Second.
That's a motion by Ms. Bascom, a second by Mr. McKinnon. Any further discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carry, any objections? No. Motion carries seven zero. All right. Any other business from, oh, sorry, that's what we'll do quickly. Sorry. Updates from anybody? Mr. Davies?
All set.
Ms. Bascom?
All set.
Mr. Moore?
Just two quick things. Before the Select Board meeting, we appointed Matt Sherland to the board in the replacement for Tyler Eaton. So he's our new board member. And then we also did, we had an appointment with the company, not our company, that has a chapter of Rolling Thunder, which is a veterans advocacy group that for the primary mission is to educate the. that for the primary mission is to educate the public about the facts of the American prisoners of war that were left behind from previous wars. There's a chair dedicated to the town, and we will be discussing on how to set that memorial up, so that is well displayed here at the town. But we do have the chair, we just are open suggestions on where we display it, how we display it to get the most people to see it and view it.
The visibility?
Correct.
What do we, I don't understand why we got the chair.
It's a, they give, a lot of towns have them, a lot of, it's so that people, when they see it, it's for the fact of thinking about those, alright, soldiers that are missing in action.
Okay.
So soldiers that were POWs or are POWs presently. It's to make sure the awareness of the public of what is still going on, what has went on in the past, so that these souls that are out there are represented and that the public generally thinks about them.
So it's an outreach method?
It's an, yeah, basically, it's an outreach method, so, then, you know, it's also to honor the, you know, the, the past prisoners of wars and stuff like that, so...
Is this just a chair?
Oh, no, it's, you don't sit in it, it's decorative, it's a POW on it, it's all nice.
It's pretty, it's in the select board office right now.
Some places have it where they have like a, I don't know what you call the robe, like a nice decorative, like the red robe, with the things rounded with an American flag on the side, you know, you have it sitting like this out, something like that, so we want to make sure it just gets displayed in a proper way, and we're thinking out here, but you know, you know, we still gotta get the answers, we still have to get that stuff, because we don't have it. We got the flag, because we have another one, but we can figure that out, so...
Is it MIA as well, missing in action?
Yes, it's POWs.
Yep.
The presentation was the New Hampshire chapter of Rolling Thunder, which brought up Exeter, I mean, excuse me.
Alright, alright. And any, so, I think you guys have had a lot on your plate, so probably didn't get to this. I saw that Northwood voted to require a special election potentially for state rep, now we've had a vacancy.
That was probably discussed on Monday meetings, but that wasn't, we weren't up to date on, well, we were, it was too new at the time, of our last meeting to make that. But I'm sure everybody has, even I have been, been found out or reached out from other representatives in town for other state, you know.
Sure.
To see what we're gonna do.
That was on your, on your plate, great, thank you.
Is, is the, I'm just curious, is the appointed, Mr. Sherland, is that a, does he just finish out the year?
He's finished up the one, he's finished up the one-year term for Mr. Tyler, had left on, his three-year left on there. And he was also a candidate for the board of selectmen, that did run this, in this previous election, so...
Nothing else from me, I'll just remind everybody that next Wednesday, five-thirty, we have the sidewalk scheduled for the Smoke Street subdivision application, meeting on Smoke Street in the area of Little River Drive, so those of you can make it, five-thirty. And we'll see how far we can do. Dude, I don't know if we mentioned it in the meeting, we, you're usually pretty good about that, is making sure that they mark, flag some things, usually Mr. Berry's pretty good about that, I don't know if, I might want to just remind him.
So I'll reach out, and I'll make sure that the Land use clerk is CC'd on my email to, because I don't like to directly communicate with the applicants at all.
Yeah.
I'm gonna reach out to Mr. Berry for the applicant to a request that if it's not done. So what Mr. McKinnon's alluding to is, a lot of times, we've asked that they stake off any proposed, like curb cuts for the, for the roads and the driveway accesses, so that way a butter's driving by can look and see, get a better idea. The highway agent can get a better idea of exactly where it is versus on the plan. And it gives you a better visual, instead of just trees and like, yeah, that's where it's gonna be. So, and then I, I will not be able to attend next Wednesday, I have firework commitment Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so I will not be at that, but I'm gonna try to sidewalk it myself before that, this is my fourth meeting, so...
To that end too, I think our subdivision actually requires staking out the center line of the road. I know that was done on the Mitchell Road project. I don't, I don't know the tracks, usually it's hanging flags is sufficient, approximate, approximate location via flags, but... Especially with the project this side is, I imagine we can kind of...
Will somebody be taking notes, because I will not be able to attend either?
I can, I've done it in the past. I'll be there, hopefully it's not required, but...
I plan to be there.
Okay. The more the merrier.
I'll send out a reminder.
But I'll, I'll plan to take notes and get...
Send out a reminder to Conservation Commission.
Yep, okay.
It's certainly a public meeting anyway, but if we have a quorum, obviously even more so, so...
Yep.
But even without a quorum, it's good to have the information.
I'll take minutes and get names.
Thank you, and then we'll get that, Alana, and they can get it.
That same day, you know, we should, in theory, potentially be seeing some new materials from them on that project as well, so...
I have nothing else. Ms. Mooney?
Mr. Berry came to our Conservation Commission meeting this past Monday and spent three-quarters of an hour, an hour presenting the plans for Smoke Street and Fort Hill Road. He was very thorough, and we will be receiving a letter from the commission about that review.
Thank you.
I just have one thing, I had sent off an email to Jen asking about an alternative, an alternate for the commission. She said, yes, you can have an alternate.
Okay.
If someone's not there, then that person can step in and vote.
Okay, good, thank you.
So do we want to address that tonight, so that we can move that along? We have a...
We might as well take something off the agenda if we can.
So we could...
So we have an applicant, correct?
Yep.
First Smith, yeah.
I know it's individual, and what they listed for their criteria and their capabilities, you know, I think, I think we'd be well-represented. Current individual, this individual, and especially if Ms. Bascom is a, is serving there as well in some form, an alternate or the rep. I think it'd finally give us a voice and make us much better represented than, than...
I like the idea of including other, where we have the opportunity, including members of the public per se as well.
Should we do two motions, one for permanent, one for alternate?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept Cheryl Smith's application to represent Nottingham on the Stratford Regional Planning Commission as a full voting member.
Second.
That's a motion by Ms. Mooney, a second by Ms. Bascom to accept the application from Cheryl Smith to be one of our two Stratford Regional Planning Commission, Commission members. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven-zero. So I will, well, let's go through the second one, is there another motion by any chance to appoint an alternate?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Teresa Bascom as an alternate for the Stratford Regional Planning Commission as a voting member when one of our regular members is not attending.
Second. Got a motion by Ms. Mooney and a second by Ms. Sandler to appoint Ms. Bascom as our alternate for the SRPC position. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, that motion carries seven-zero as well. I will send, draft another letter and send it off to the select board, because the final approval has to go through the select board. So we make a recommendation, they make the, they make the appointment, so...
And that's because she's not an elected member of the board?
Just the way the, just the way it's written. No, no, even if she was an elected member of the board.
Oh, okay, alright.
It still goes to the select board.
No, I'm just curious, yeah.
I got a question, when that approval happens, do I get sent information from SRPC as to where the meetings are, when they are, that type of thing?
I would hope so. We will get you, we'll try to make sure that you get on whatever...
There's an email chan, there's an email list that you get put on, I think is what, they get kind of blast emails.
Over to that.
Alright, I will adjourn the meeting, it is nine-twenty, I thank everybody for your time, again, it's valuable as always, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Yep.